Good evening, I'd like to call to you to order the committee of a whole for September 11th. Ms. Spoke, if you'd read the roll, please.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussein did call in and he is ill this evening. So with that, we have the minutes of August 28th. Vice President.
Thank you, Council President. I move the minutes of the August 28th meeting as written.
We have a motion on the minutes, so are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. This is an opportunity for public comment. If you would like to address the council, this is your opportunity for the items on the agenda. If you would please come up to the dais, if you would state, yes, the podium, not the dais, thank you, to the podium, if you'd state your name for the record, and then you will have three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to address the council at this time?
Greetings, council. My name is Dan Doyle. I am the attorney representing Energy Events Center and Ryan Cabell, and I wanted to make a brief comments on the hearing today. I had a chance to review and receive the findings of fact and recommendation. I just want to indicate that we're disappointed in the recommendation, in fact, in the fact that we believe it does not comport with the law. It does not comport with Section 808-10, which requires multiple incidents, specifically two instances within 180 days for a revocation or to be determined. I did want to point out that Ryan Cabell nor Energy Events Center has not been convicted or charged for violating any federal offense. Ryan Cabell nor Energy Events Center has not been formally charged or convicted of any state offense, and has not been formally charged nor convicted of any violations of any city ordinances. With that being said, I would ask that you take all that into consideration when voting. I do understand that a serious incident occurred. I would just ask that you look to the law, that should be applied in this matter, and that it's not a one and done type of situation. And if you would look at Section 808-10B, which gives the requirement for the warnings of this incident. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time? You can state your name for the record.
Summer Green.
Thank you.
A shelter in place was implemented by Ryan Cabell that night that no one has even spoke of, where he and his staff physically put children in the building for their own safety. My child was one of them. Had it not been done, she may not be here today. Lansing Human Rights Ordinance protects from discrimination, irrelevant characteristic traits like those that were just opposed to peace that night, in that place at that A place that Lansing apparently since 2012 has planned to transform anyway. This idea was re-presented in 2020, but pushed back due to the COVID. So it's really like not fair for the overlay, for basically Mr. Cabell, the overlay for the city's underplay, to change it anyway. My final fact and purpose is that four of the six topics on the agenda for tonight include changing ordinances, one of which 273 for discrimination within the city's departments. These same departments that affect and influence the findings that are being considered tonight. It's only ethical that the council disaffirm and modify yet another ordinance considerate since the same departments affect and influence the findings. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time?
My name is William Watkins. And the Energy Events Center is a positive place for kids and at-risk youth to go and have a good time, listen to music. And what happened unfortunately was one isolated incident, but yet Ryan, he do gives back to the community, and is a very positive person. And I feel trying to take this right, Event Center from him will put more youth at risk with nothing else better to do but run the streets. And the main focus is gun laws and guns on the streets. And I've seen many places, Rotary Park, that had three deaths. The Tin Can Dukes, they done had deaths outside of downtown Lansing. Gregory's done had deaths. Save My Market had a person killed outside of there. Quickies done had four deaths. And other numerous places and locations that had people die. And his Event Center, he's protecting the people inside and the ones, the scragglers outside. It's a vast parking lot, can't control everybody. But yeah, I feel like it would be unfair to take something away that's doing something positive for the community. And all these other places where people done died that wasn't even an eyebrow raised or a council meeting to shut them places down, which is stores, bars, and other locations. But yet one incident happened at Ryan's Energy Events Center, and none of them, none of them folks died, none of them. It's unfortunate what happened, but no one died there. But the places where people did die at, it's not even eyebrow or a mention about shutting them down, taking their liquor license or none of that. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time?
How you doing? My name is Il Speek. I'm here to let you know that we are the city. You are the councilman, but you truly don't speak to us because you don't truly represent us. Ryan Campbell had to go do everything possible to get a cabaret license with no help from you as a city. Did everything that the city put out there to do, every rule. It took him two to three years to even open, to do everything with all the guidelines that you placed for us. Us as minorities in this area, we feel a certain way about the city because you guys don't help, because you're not with us. So it was us versus you guys. He did everything that was possible, that he had to do, every piece of paperwork. Now it comes down to, it's a process. How is it that you feel that you're bigger than the process? The process is a warning. Then you get another warning with a fine. Then the other warning, we are here and then you have the right to take it. How can you just decide one day, oh, something happened in the vast parking lot and we're going to take this man's license? Why? Because he's not part of the council. He's not part of the city. He has nothing to do with what you guys do in your structure. What he is, he's part of the community. He's part of our structure. He's what give us our entertainment. He gives us our protection. That's what he is to the real community. That's what you have to understand. Like he said, those things that happen downtown, that's you guys' thing. You guys have deaths on your hand and everybody still parties the next night. What took place in a parking lot of Logan Square, there's always violence in that parking lot, and the city does nothing about it. You knowing there's violence in the parking lot, why isn't it a police officer that goes and it parks, let its presence be known? That would stop the violence so much, take the percentage down. It's that simple. And we pay for that small right that you don't do. And then to take this man's event, knowing that what occurred in that parking lot had nothing to do with him, he had something going on for kids in high school. They were in there, they were partying, they were safe, they come out, mainly already had happened and there was police there, meaning nothing to do with this man. Then you have something saying that he has to protect on a cabaret 1,500 feet in each direction, which is over a quarter mile in each direction all the way around. Come on, that is humanly not working here in Lansing. That's against us. See, we are the people here. We need you as the council to come and talk to the people. Come and help us, support us. We take our finances and put our finances back into the community to provide for our community. We do pack pack drives, we do events for adults, we do events for the kids, and we finance everything and we have the community support. We don't have the city support. We don't have the council support. We don't know you. You people don't come into our communities and speak with us and do the events that we have. Go in our community and ask about Il Speek. Ask about Ryan Campbell. Ask about Justin Christian. Ask about who truly is in the community that puts on these events and do these things for our community. And then you come in and use him for a scapegoat to get rid of him and stop what we have going on in our community that gives us something to do, that gives us life, that keeps us happy. Because we need the police to police.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time? Please come up and state your name for the record.
Loretta Stanaway. Couple of things briefly. I'm thankful to see in the budget amendments, the 100% restoration of the operating costs for parks and recreation, as you promised. That promise has been kept, and I thank you for that. On this licensing issue, I'm kind of split. I can see both sides of the story, and I was leaning towards suggesting that there be some kind of a compromise in giving him a probationary period or something, and then I learned he was supposed to have had a license for the party and did not have a license. And that kind of kicked me back over to the other side of the fence. The ordinances relating to the human resources, my suggestion and hope and wish is that you will do whatever it takes to keep that a strong and strengthen that situation ordinance, rather than to gut it and strip it of its power. And lastly, budget priorities for the coming year, as always, first is police and fire, second is roads and sidewalks, third is code compliance and all the related issues that go with that, and fourth is parks. Those four things encompass everything that creates the quality of life, or does not create the quality of life in the city of Lansing. The rest is hoo-ha's and bells and whistles. So please focus on those four things when you're drafting your priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time?
Hi, my name is Miranda, and two of my sons was killed August 4th of 2020 in the Pleasant Grove Plaza. And you guys did nothing to come and shut that business down. And then just this year, on my son's anniversary death date, my cousin's son was just killed in that same Pleasant Grove Plaza. So where's the fairness in any of this at? I need answers. My grandchildren need answers.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time?
Hello. My name is Amanda Morgan. I'm a social worker in this town. I've been doing, been on the front line of mental health for 18 years. And I hear a lot from people in the communities, and I heard Ryan Cabell's name long before this incident, and I only heard good things and positive things he brought to his parties and his community. At this, and I'm a white woman, and I heard about how positive he was. I stand that he should have whatever, grace period or whatever. I want him to be a stakeholder in this town. You all do not have the language to deal with what's going on. You haven't been doing it, you've been escalating it. You all, as in anybody who's in a leadership position, making decisions from here to the police. We are not doing the right things to stop the murders in this town. Getting rid of a stakeholder who is positive and people look up to is also not the right decision, regardless of the bureaucracy or the policies. There's some people here that I'm ready to vote out, because I'm tired of this polarity between our communities. Mr. Cabell is a stakeholder in our community, he has a good reputation. He followed all the rules to get his cabaret license, more so than most people did, and he did do, he had some errors. But guess what? You didn't follow, there's a warning process. There's more than one thing you gotta do. You can't just use policies and procedures to get people out or to scapegoat them. And this is scapegoating. That, that, every, no one talked to him, by the way, in investigations and stuff. Nobody really came to the community and talked to the community that was being affected. I don't believe there was alcohol in his place, but somebody says that there's red cups there. I don't believe, I believe that the investigation is biased. I believe that there's a lot of bias in this room. I hope it's, well, let me rephrase that. It's either implicit bias, or this is explicit bias. But this is all about bias. So please, here are the citizens here today, this isn't something that's, you know, that you have power and control over. This is something that you need to resolve for the stakeholder, this person that we need here. You must help him, not the businesses you get, you make money from, not the side deals you've got for the other businesses. We don't do the same things to the black business owners in this town that are successful that we do to the white business owners in this town. I'm a white woman here saying that to you loudly as I possibly can with respect to you, because you need to hear that. And people have been saying this for a long time here to you all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
Hello, my name is Al Phillips. I live in the neighborhood where this incident occurred. What I'm seeing right now from this panel and anyone that has any kind of thought of shutting this business down and removing his license, is I see finger pointing. I see taking the blame away from what should really be done in this city that's not being done. Now, since I've lived over there since 2017, there have been several shootings at an apartment complex, Dorchester or something, but I don't remember hearing anything about a hearing to remove their rental license. There have been shootings at several stores, but I've never heard anything about removing a liquor license. We have to keep this fair. Right now, yeah, I'm not a fan of big giant parties, but I'm a fan of my community. Now, my building is right next to the corner spot where I got brothers and we do things together. We clean up, we do fireworks shows. I was actually denied the right to do my fireworks show for June 15th. I was donating $15,000 worth of fireworks. And, oh, we can't do it because the fire marshal said, but 4th of July goes on every year without a hitch. Now, there have been other events at this Energy Events Center since that happened, but there's been no incidents, no problems, anything. I really think everybody needs to take a step back and focus on what the real problem is. The real problem is, not only Lansing has a problem, America has a problem. Mass shootings everywhere. We got armed security and police officers at Michigan State University, but that didn't stop anything. We didn't shut that down. We didn't talk about what we need to do about that. So I really think that you guys really need to take a thought and figure out where the real problem is. Changes need to take place. Maybe you need to get with the police chief and the mayor, maybe it's time to start policing different around here. Because our community, we try to govern ourselves, and we are trying, we're trying our best, but we also need the resources and the things that we pay taxes for, and we vote people into positions because we feel that they are the best people for the job. So please, stop wasting time, stop pointing fingers, let's not make this about another young black man that started a business, oh, he's a nuisance. What's a nuisance about it? There's been one incident. He cannot govern and control an entire parking lot, as well as the stores can't do it, as well as the clubs can't do it. Let's stop making this about, let's, let's get off this news tip to make the public feel like, oh, okay, we're working on it. And in order to make it happen, we're going to close this business down. Because what happens after you take his license and he's not operating anymore and something else happens? Then what's the explanation then? How are we going to say, well, we solved the problem by taking this license, but it's still going on? Listen to your community. Listen to the people that voted you in. It's enough of us here to tell you.
Thank you. Sir, please, this is not the time for outbursts from the audience. Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening to the council. My name is Mark King. How you doing? I'm here personally to speak on the issue of Ryan Cabell and the Energy Events Center. Just from a historical perspective, I know many of you on the council, and there's been a real effort to try to create entertainment options on the south side of Lansing. I've been involved in the scene for over probably 20 years. So one thing that is not happening with Mr. Cabell's business is the interaction with the city council, the mayor's office, and the police to come up with solutions to help him have a better business. A year ago, a year and a half ago during the pandemic, there were all these meetings about how can we make Logan Square a better place for people to come and have different options for entertainment and businesses. There was meetings there, some of the council people were there, and there were ideas brought out. So we know that the Logan Square has had some issues. So Mr. Cabell's idea of an event space properly licensed and everything up to code to give a good business, he has done. And that's based upon those meetings that the city said they wanted the Logan Square owners to have in that space. And at this point, to deny him the opportunity, a fair opportunity, to run his business without interaction from the police, from city council members, is unfair. You know, it states right in the ordinance, there's, there's, there's three steps. You know, there's a first occurrence, a second occurrence, and a third occurrence. In that time, there should be some interaction with the police chief and whoever the other factors are to work out an amicable plan so this business can be successful. Mr. Cabell has invested his time, his money, and he's been a successful promoter in this market for over 20 years. I can vouch for that. And I think you really need to think about that before you revoke his license. I think you're a little premature in doing that, and I can speak for myself with the businesses that I've had. I've had interaction with the city when we've had problems with our businesses, with my, with my entertainment businesses. We can go back to 1991 with Neos on Waverly and Jolly. We can go to the Fahrenheit, which is on the south side of town, and there's been a constant interaction. Mr. Cabell deserves that same right. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, anyone else that would like to address the council at this time?
I knew I wasn't going to waste an opportunity. Mike Lynn, obviously you guys know I'm up here every two weeks. Predominantly, my conversation is about gun violence prevention and so on and so forth, but also corruption inside city, city hall, which brings me to this conversation today because I've seen both. When this first took place, I was actually on the phone with Adam Hussein, third ward council member, when this was going on in Logan Square, and we were both irate. I had been clocking, this party was about to take place in Logan Square, I had been clocking the other mass shootings that we had in the city, and I was really frustrated that anybody would put something like this on during the time that we was dealing with. So I was upset. You know, I was right along the same line as you all were. I should say the mayor wasn't until he was pressed to, was that we need to get rid of this, what is going on up here? Because Logan Square had just been on our mind forever, especially people who had worked in this field. And then I got a chance to sit down or sit on it, relax for a minute, and speak to Ryan Cabell. First time I met him was over this, this process. And as I heard the process lay out to exactly what took place, what transpired, even as I sat in this public hearing, I found that it wasn't Ryan Cabell's fault of what took place there. One of the police officers sat in here and stated specifically, that one of the victims stated that he had come from a boxing party, a fight night party, and knew that there was going to be a party up there and pulled into the parking lot, at which point what happened took place. Ryan Cabell stated he came outside and seen everything going on. How was he supposed to stop any of that? 70 shelf cases went off, and it was written in the report as if, and they didn't do anything. I'm a licensed firearm instructor, a security, I do security. 70 gunshots go off, I don't care what I'm armed with, I'm finding cover, I'm trying to survive that encounter. What was his security supposed to do in that situation? Just like what is anybody supposed to do? I've been in situations where I've seen police let 70 gunshots go off before they come in. Now, because remember, I'm a fireman as well, right? So I've sat waiting for the police to clear something up before we could come in. So what I'm saying to y'all is that I sat and watched a kangaroo court take place in here, and that's ultimately why I'm here, because I just can't let y'all play with us. And that's why I'm always down here. And as of late, it hasn't been city council doing it. So I know, I feel pretty solid that you guys are going to take your time with this, and you're going to figure out some resolution. It isn't just making the mayor look like he's actually doing something about gun violence, because we know this ain't it. As many times I've been down here talking about gun violence and what we need to do, so you all know, and as you all know, and I guess the people out here know, we have a building right across the street from this, where this is all we do, is deal with gun violence prevention, intervention, and support. And we are saying that we would love to have this event center be there with the support of the city. We have a lock, a lock-in that goes on every Halloween, we don't have no place to do it anymore, but this man has the exact space. And he's got the ability to bring 300 high school kids together in one space, something the village over five years hasn't been able to do. So it'd be a travesty to just try to make the mayor look good as if he's doing something by circumventing your own process and just taking this man's license. But second to that, license or not, he invited y'all in, he can continue doing what he wanted to without that. So take that into consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, Erica Lynn. I do want to say that I'm really, really proud to hear so many people from our community come up here and give you some insight to how community is perceiving this, what community has to say about this. I'm here, right here, every two weeks, constantly trying to get across to you how detrimental it is when you create all of these opportunities that do nothing but erode trust with the community. We already acknowledge that there's issues with trust between city council and the community, Propaganda, our mayor, and, and the community, the Lansing Police Department, the community. And at every turn and every opportunity that we have as a community to cohesively work together to support business owners that come into our community that are our own, whether they were born here or not born here, they're now our own. It's like they get met with every single barrier that we can possibly think of. This incident was not Energy Events Center's fault. It was not Ryan Cabell's fault. We know this. Two and a half weeks prior to that, there was a massive fight in there. There was a video circulating where there was multiple gun scene, just a year, about, about a year ago, around the same time. Propaganda got called out for not doing something about it. He was told, somebody is going to die there. There is going to be something really bad that happens. In that year, how many assaults, how many fights, how many gunshots have been found to have happened in that very same spot? But what do we do? We allow new ownership to come in 2019. They gave you a whole bunch of promise of goods of what they were going to do, what they were going to spend on, revamp, do all this, and what did you get? You got a couple of potholes replaced and some paint on the exterior. That's it. They did nothing to address the very, very core issues of what was creating the environment at Logan Square that Ryan Cabell could no more control than Lansing Police Department, city council, and the mayor have been able to control for the last 12 years. So to scapegoat and put Ryan Cabell in the position for trying to do something good for our community, which is all we've been asking for, that's what we want, right? No, it doesn't feel like that. It feels like, well, all we want is to revamp downtown. So when some, so when some stuff happens in downtown, what do we do? We protect that. We don't talk about it. We make sure the headlines aren't building that narrative. Shootings happen in downtown constantly, so much so that Lansing Police Department has to sit in the middle of meeting. Everybody sees it. I, in Michigan Avenue, you go out there Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, LPD is right there in the middle. Why is that? Because people fight, shots go off. Why isn't the Nut House at risk of losing their license? Why isn't the Tin Can? Why is any other business not held to those same standards? This is a witch hunt. It's scapegoating Ryan Cabell, and we as a community are tired of it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? As I asked before, this is, please, from the audience, this is council's time, and please conduct yourself as so. Thank you.
My name is Chris Hicks. I'm the owner of Ryan. I've been working with Ryan for years, over 20 years. I was there when the incident happened. I was probably like the security there. We was all inside. So when gunshots went off, we heard the gunshots from the inside. So we went outside, we didn't know what was going on until we went out there. Now, there's nothing that we can do from the parking lot. Everything's happened out there, as far as the distance is go, it was nowhere near the patrons. So the patrons way out there in the parking lot. Now, the thing is, why would you just help instead of blaming them? We can get control of that parking lot, we have no problem. You know what I'm saying? We get distance, don't you have patrols just going right, right through there? Y'all know what's been going on. I know y'all check Facebook, so y'all know what's been going on. You have patrols just going on every now and then, there wouldn't be no problems. I worked with a lot of kids, I've been around with a lot of kids. I know, so when inside, there'd be no problem. When the cats get outside, the young cats get outside, it's just like everywhere. You got the fights, every, gunshots, every. My brother worked at every, security. It's just, what do y'all do? You can't stop it unless you find it. So my whole thing is, why would you help the problem, the situation? Half the problem is, you know, as parents too. We get us parents together, you know what I'm saying? Get our kids together and check our kids, see where they at. That's what it is. You know what I'm saying? You can't blame that man just for the gunshots that's going out there for somebody getting hurt. It's been going on for years, and like I said, the last couple of weeks has been shootings, people getting shot. Have y'all stopped that? You can't stop it unless you find it. You can't stop it unless you find it. That's all I say.
All right, thank you, sir. Sir, anyone else that would like to address the council at this time? Seeing no one else, we'll move on with our, uh, agenda.
How you doing? I am Ryan Cabell, owner of Energy Events Center. And just for the record, this is what it's all about, right? This piece of paper. This is the cabaret license, right here, that I've had for two years. Two years, and only done two events under this cabaret license. Two years. I've had that property for three years. June 20th, 2020, that's when I obtained that property. I put over $50,000 into that property. I did everything that was required to open up a legal business. Everybody had to sign off. Fire marshal, building inspector, police department, safety. Everything under the sun. It happened twice because I had this same piece of paper renewed. So let's talk facts. Am I in the middle of a battle between the city and Logan Square? Because nobody, y'all don't even know me. I'm not even a Lansing citizen. I'm from Flint, Michigan. You didn't even take, you didn't even take the time to become a welcoming committee to myself. Nobody asked, can we shake his hand? Can we introduce, introduce ourselves to him? I sat there in that last hearing and watched a police officer lie through the entire hearing. I read every single page in that police report, front to back. I watched him assume everything based off body cameras. Red solo cups, definitely. Why? Because I don't have a liquor license. But I had cranberry juice, orange juice, bottled water, and pop and potato chips. Funny, Mr. Hussein is not here. I went into the squag meeting the other day, and guess what was on the tables? Red solo cups. So do we assume they was drinking? Let's paint this narrative. Because none of y'all was there. The mayor, the police, or Andrew Watkins wasn't there. That shooting happened while the event was going on. We opened the door when we exited my event, and we saw the police. I'm Ryan Cabell. I'm the owner. Let's go by the law. Let's go by the same ordinance. Let's work together, but let's go by protocol and the law. Give me a warning. It won't happen again, but give me a warning. I understand protocol and law.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. Um, next, we have presentation from the Financial Empowerment Center. Amber, are you here? Thank you, Amber. You would come down into the well? And then make sure the green light is on. And it's your opportunity for your presentation.
Okay, it's gonna be real simple and short. Um, wanted to make sure you were all in the loop about some changes coming to the Office of Financial Empowerment. So this year, when the contract came to a close of the contract year, sorry, at Cristo Rey Community Center for the Financial Empowerment Center, we sat down with them and agreed that the direction that the FEC needs to go in now is, um, is a restructure. And it was a, it was a mutual decision and an amicable one, but what we are going to do now is we're gonna pull the Financial Empowerment Center in-house. Those will be city positions. So before, I had an operations coordinator that was a city staff, and then I had a program manager that was a Cristo Rey staff that we paid for them out of contractual services. Those two positions will be combined now and will be the position of municipal financial empowerment program manager in the OFE. So that person will oversee the FEC relaunch. Um, and so I wanted to let all of you know this because right now, people cannot get Financial Empowerment Center appointments. Um, the Cristo Rey took the last three months, um, July, August, and September to serve the clients that they already had. Councilmember Spitzley?
Finish your statement, and then we'll call on, I'll call on Councilmember Spitzley.
All right, so what we'll have, um, when we're, when we are readjusted is we'll have the MFE program manager overseeing the Financial Empowerment Center, but also serving in that role of helping me with other OFE programs. And we'll have two financial counselors, which is what we had at Cristo Rey.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Madam President. So my question is, um, so when did this reorganization? When was this announcement for the reorganization?
It, it has not been announced. I, that's why I came to you this evening.
When did you meet with Cristo Rey?
Um, as we were wrapping up the contract in June.
So you met with him in June and announced?
I believe it was June. It was to, it was as the contract was coming to a close. We had more than 30 days before the end of the contract year, so it probably was late May.
Um, did you have a full, so you had a, a staff person working for Cristo Rey and a staff person for the city?
So the, the Financial Empowerment Center itself had three staff people and occasionally four, which was two financial counselors and a program manager, and briefly, three financial counselors and a program manager. And then there was the operations coordinator who was a city staff. Those other three positions that were Cristo Rey staff, the OFE paid for those salaries in a contractual way. So we had a contract with Cristo Rey for $190,000 per year, which paid for the staffing, the, um, all of the software and all of their equipment and materials.
So does the, does the, was... So I'm trying to think back to, like, the budgeting and when the budget happened and, and the increase in budget and all of that. And so when we did all that, that was, it was anticipated that you would be doing this reorg?
No, we did not intend to do this reorg. This was very much a decision made as the contract was coming to a close.
I, I'm, I'm good.
Oh, thank you so much for being here. She asked one of my, Councilwoman Spitzley asked one of my questions as far as the timing, so it's been a few months. We were under the impression, she also brought up about the budgeting, that the Financial Empowerment Center was growing. Um, why would you be combining staff? And it sounds like decreasing the level of service that you're able to provide as you go forward in this restructure?
When we, this is, this is the reasoning behind that decision is that the, the program manager for the Financial Empowerment Center, when we, when that position was created, um, some of you were here for that and will remember, there were four counselors. And it is my opinion that a person can do more in 40 hours per week than manage two individuals. And so, uh, because I think if there were four, it would be a situation where we probably expect that to be their only duty, but with just two to manage, we think they can do some other things as well. FEC will be their priority, especially as we relaunch.
In, in follow-up to that, so I guess my question is, from, you know, we have so many needs, financial needs, so many challenges with COVID, homeless, people receiving services, um, from the different agencies, um, through HRCS. In 2020, 2021, 2022, 20 now, in 2023, what has been the service level, um, growth that I was under the impression was, was happening, and that's why we need to, to approve more support?
The support that you approved from ARPA, is that what you're referring to?
From my understanding, the Financial Empowerment Center has been growing with the need. So my question is, how many people were served in 2023 versus 2022 versus 2021 versus 2020?
The Financial Empowerment Center staff did not increase in those years. In fact, it decreased. But one of the reasons behind that is that COVID showed us, and this is why we came to you all for ARPA. COVID showed us that we had a serious issue with marketing and outreach because when we could not do those things in person, our demand fell. And then we came and asked you all for some ARPA dollars to help get the word out that the, that it was available because a lot of the people who began to have financial hardship during COVID were people who had not had financial hardship before and were less aware of resources available to them. And so we came to you for marketing dollars. Those actually were not used. And so those are available still because the ARPA spending period continues to be used to market the relaunch. And so I anticipate that then our numbers will go up. I can't give you exact numbers today. I could follow up with them tomorrow. Uh, but numbers have gone down. And that's one of the reasons we think we need to restructure because if we have them as city employees, then they can be easily connected to HRCS referrals and other city referrals, including 54A District Court, which is one of our biggest sources of referrals.
So you'll be providing, um, the number of constituents, not the number of staff that have been receiving services? Do you also have it broke down, um, to where the referrals are coming from?
Absolutely, we can do that. That'll take me longer than a dingo because I have to send it to IT to do that piece of it, but yes, we can do that.
Well, thank you so much. I'm definitely not against, um, having city employees, but it would seem if we are the Financial Empowerment and HRCS, regardless of who we're contracting, they're representing the city, it shouldn't be a difference in referring based on if someone's, you know, a contract 1099 or a W-2. That doesn't make any sense to me. But thank you so much.
I think, I think it will have much more to do with it being part of city structure. Uh, and the biggest reason that I wanted to make that change, make sure that you were all aware of and on board with that change is because we will be asking for those dollars that were in contractual services to now be used to pay those employees. There's 190,000 in contractual services every year that should be enough to cover the two full-time counselors.
If I can just make one final comment?
Sure.
With, over this last two years, hearing how many people are in critical need of, you know, budgeting, financial personal, all of these different testimonies and the need that we've heard, um, at this diocese about the increase of need for constituents in Lansing, going through Human Relations Community Services Department and us not being able to meet the need and needing more funding and so on and so forth. Um, it's shocking that we are having a decrease in people who need financial empowerment services. That's very, very surprising. Thank you.
Um, other questions by councilmembers? Um, Amber, I guess my question would be, and, and maybe you said it when I was taking some notes, but, um, since, um, changing the dynamics with Cristo Rey, did I hear that you are not taking appointments right now? Is that correct?
Correct. We've been sunsetting the existing clients and, um, and letting them know that we would be wrapping up. And we've been referring anyone who contacts us new to either Case Credit Union's free financial counseling or to Capital Area Housing Partnership.
Do we know how many of those we're, we're getting?
The, um, the FEC phone number now gives my number and email address, and I have taken about three calls. It, but we just stopped taking new folks very recently.
Councilmember Spitzley and then Councilmember Brown.
So you, we're, we're, we are now referring people to Case Credit Union, which offers a free service, and Capital Area Housing Partnership, which also offers a free service. So, and so again, I'm still trying to figure out then if, if those services are free and we're referring them, similar to like what 311 does, where, where, where is the justification of having an in-house?
There's a difference between being offered free and being free, and so those things have a cost, right? And Case Credit Union does not have the bandwidth to take our full caseload forever.
But you can't tell us what your full caseload is, nor can, and you've already said that you're not accepting new folks. So again, my question stands. If, if, if you can't tell us what your caseload is right now and you're not accepting new people, I mean, you know, at the end of the day, I guess, I'm, you know, when you, when budget time comes around, this will not be my issue. But I think it is an important issue because, to me, it, it is, it is indicative of, you know, we have services and we have entities that already provide these services. We do. She just said Case Credit Union and the Capital Area Housing Partnership. They provide these services already. And so we are gonna be asked next year for budget, and we know that we're gonna have some budget challenges next year. We're gonna be asked next year to budget staff, the hiring of staff, because they're bringing this office into the city of Lansing's umbrella. So I guess it's just not gonna, it's not gonna be my issue, but that's something that, and, and we still, you know, I guess IT will let us know what the, what the, um, service number is. Um, but we do know that you're not, you're not accepting new people, and you're drawing a salary. So what, you know, that, that's, that's a concern for me.
May I, may I respond? That is one of four programs that I oversee. And those two free services are the closest we can get to FEC right now. I asked Raleigh Van Fossen at CAP if we could refer clients to him, and he said, please make sure that's for the people with a, with a housing need. So he's looking for the pre-purchase counseling, the post-purchase counseling, and the eviction prevention or foreclosure prevention. Those are the clients I can send to CAP. Everyone else can go to Case, but she does not have the bandwidth, and I say she, Norma McGary, who I work with at Case, who we've been partnered with for over a decade. She doesn't have the bandwidth to do this forever. We asked her to support us through this transition. So I would just like to note, not only am I running four programs, but we've been short three staff for months since April. So I'm doing two and a half jobs, and Charles is doing two and a half jobs. We are trying to get to the point where we're each only doing one job.
Until, that sounds like an HR issue, not a city council issue, first of all. So the other thing is, that's fine, but that, that is a valid question that I think needs to be answered as we move forward. And if it's, you, you are overseeing four programs and that there are other people that can do those programs, maybe that's one program that the Financial Empowerment Zone does not need to be doing. That's, so that's my comment. Thank you.
What we do is the supreme level, the nationwide best model for financial counseling created out of New York City government, and we don't, we want to be the ones providing that.
You're not providing it. You just said you're not taking. Peter, he, she's not providing it. She, she just said she's not accepting any other, um, clients. Now, if you're gonna come here and you're gonna, you have to be able to be able to have hard questions answered. If you don't, if she can't, I'm really sorry. But that's the question. She said she, she, she's not accepting any clients. And that, that's, that's a truism.
Peter, I believe, or Councilmember Spatafor, I believe he had a point of order.
No, it was a question. But I thought, I didn't know how long the back and forth was gonna go on.
So you have a?
I have a question. Could you clarify?
Before you ask your question, I, I was already having a...
Point of order, Madam President. Seriously, back and forth? Back and forth? I, I'm not allowed to ask questions. It had, now it has to be trivialized to a back and forth.
I apologize.
Thank you, Councilmember Spatafor, for the apology. And I will sometimes, Councilmember Brown, when someone raises their hand, I thought it was a follow-up to something, Councilmember. So was, is it a, all right, Councilmember, um, Councilmember Brown, and then Councilmember Spatafor. Nothing? Council, okay. Councilmember Spatafor.
Ms. Paxton, apologize for interrupting your, everyone at the diocese. Could you clarify for me, please, because I was confused now by?
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, but we lost a quorum. So we... Please be quiet in the audience.
Stop, please, since everybody's body language.
Please be quiet in the audience, or you'll be asked to be removed. Please be quiet in the audience, or you will be asked to be removed. Please be quiet in the audience or you will be asked to be removed. Four, five. We now have a quorum back, so?
Yeah, first of all, I apologize for my inappropriate point of order. To Councilmember Spitzley, if she can hear me. And secondly, though, I did have a question for you, Ms. Paxton, along the lines of Ms. Spitzley's questioning. Correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe I misunderstood. You've suspended services while you go through this transition. You are looking to hire staff to bring this service back in-house for the FEC? And you're, in order to fill a temporary gap in service, you're referring folks to Case and CAP? Is that correct?
That is correct.
So the goal is to bring these contracted positions in as city positions to use the model that you've been using with contractors, with city employees? That's what I was trying to understand as a clarification for when budget time comes around next year.
Yes, that is correct. And I've already had a funder approach me about their wishing to invest in this. So we're, you know, we are doing everything we can to not ask for any additional money. I'm not asking council for additional funds. I'm asking them to reclass funds from contractual services to salaries and fringe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My question.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say that, you know, during my time in council, it seems that sometimes when people come and, you know, have to speak on city matters, it's our job, we've been voted for by the residents of Lansing to be responsible, to ask the difficult questions. And I will say overall, and I'm not directing this directly to you, Ms. Paxton, but being defensive and offended and, you know, we really, as a city, need to look at, how are we doing what's best for the common good? How are we being transparent? How are we being responsible? And how can we work together? As city council for this particular topic, I'm just finding out now that we have not been providing services. When the constituents are calling me saying they need help or they've been evicted, you know, back and forth, homeless, all of these different situations that we take up here on this dais very seriously, and we're not providing those services, and you're saying that we have organizations that are doing some of it based on what the person's goals are. And so, you know, it just really doesn't sit well with me. And I want to make that comment because we're here, and me personally, I'm here to represent the constituents and the common good of the City of Lansing. And we should know that. And we should be prepared and we should have information when we come up here because it's not us just reporting to council, but everyone who's at the public, who has the minutes, who's watching on TV, who wants this information for their city and their taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Okay, with that, I don't believe there are any other questions, and thank you, Amber, for being here this evening. That takes us on to the three-year financial projections with the Chief Strategy Officer, Jake Brower. Jake, if you would please come up to the dais, to the well. Take a seat. Make sure the green light is on. And we will open this up for you to begin, sir.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It's a pleasure to be back with the City of Lansing. Thank each and every one of you for inviting me here today. I'm here in the capacity as your Chief Strategy Officer. I have two items here before you. One is a summary of our three-year financial projections, the other being a quarter-one budget adjustment, looking at the fiscal year 2023, 2024. Looking first at our financial projection, you'll see a familiar format from previous years. We have our revenues and expenditures, our 2023 year-end final budget as amended, the 2024 budgeted projections, which are slightly different from the budget adjustment you see before you in ways that I'll explain, and then fiscal '25 and '26 projections as to what we believe our revenues and expenditures look like in a status quo perspective. Overall, the methodology behind this is listed in detail, the assumptions that are aligned with account categories as derived from assigning the codes coming from the Michigan Uniform Chart of Accounts to our own account structures. With our revenues, these are based on our budget as proposed for you today. With expenditures, it uses these inflationary assumptions to our unaudited expenditures as of last year to account for areas in the budget that may be higher on a more conservative basis than our expenditures. Our budget being, as we remember from fundamentals, an authorization to spend rather than a projection of our spending. Overall, our major revenue components, looking at our property taxes, we've seen fairly stable growth from this area in relation to the COVID-19 pandemic, where previous recessions have had significant impacts on our property tax revenues. Taxable values have been increasing at a rather large rate, particularly with supply changing hands, the uncapping of property tax values, growth, low demand or low supply facing high demand for housing. And overall, this, we are projecting 5% continued growth, which is consistent with previous years. When it comes to income tax, this is one of our areas which you may have heard frequently from Finance Department over the years that is rather sensitive to economic changes. Fortunately, as a result of economic support from the state and federal government, we've not seen catastrophic falls in relation to COVID-19 and the anticipated effects related to that. We're projecting cautious, modest growth there. We're projecting around 5% for property tax revenues. This projection puts in 2% for income taxes, really being sensitive to shocks that may materialize but cannot really be predicted on an individual basis. When it comes to revenue sharing, one of the things we're looking at is that over the past two years, we've seen one-time increases be replaced by one-time increases in funding from the state. At one point, that needs to become either permanent increase or otherwise be removed from the budget. So when you look at the projection, we're putting in 2% for one year and then 2.5% the following year, accounting for that potential impact. Really, the more exciting things when it comes to return on equity, that's based on the projections from the Board of Water and Light, converted to a percentage ratio in the assumptions. When it comes to our wages, we're looking at continued growth in our collective bargaining agreements, continued modest increases, increasing costs of healthcare and retirement benefits as it connects to our employees. Overall, when it comes to our expenditures, accounting for a modest amount of inflation into the future, controlling the costs which we have some discretionary control over. Looking then at a status quo, taking all these impacts together, our revenue assumptions, which are detailed, our expenditure assumptions, which are similarly detailed, our debt service schedules, it becomes a math problem, applying those percentages to our revenue expenditure categories, and then our year-end results, looking at a net impact of fund balance, which is declining but not as severe as a rate has been projected in previous years. This we account for in several aspects, one of which being in particular, the steps that have been taken over the past three to five years, recognizing that the structural deficit is a problem that the city needs to resolve, and taking steps, big and small, in order to close that gap. And so taking advantage of federal stimulus funds, taking care of the short-term gaps in funding, and allowing economic growth to close that gap on the revenue side, and containing expenditures to the best of our capacity on the expense side. Does anyone have any questions today as to this presentation is laid out here?
Questions, we have Councilmember Spatafor and, did I see you, Councilmember Garza? And then I know the internal auditor has a few questions, so Councilmember Spatafor.
Thank you, President Wood. Hey Jake, welcome back. I'm looking at debt service right now and expenditures. See approximately a 23%, 24% increase. Is that directly attributable to the police and fire millage, or is there something else going on in debt service we should know about?
Yes, so there's two aspects here, the principal and interest. If you go back to the projection itself, on the debt service side, you'll see it staying relatively constant around 1.3 million. This is just the amortization of our debt schedules as it relates to principal and interest. And the way that I managed in this spreadsheet is I adjusted these percentages to approximately equal that schedule, so it is not precise to the dollar, but it's in the ballpark.
I'm sorry, I wasn't clear in which years I'm talking. So between the 23 amended and 24 projected, it goes up quite a bit, and then it is relatively stable going forward. You know what the, why the roughly 20%, 23% increase between 23 and 24 is? My assumption is it's paying off the bonds that we just cashed in on the police and fire millage, but?
That may likely be the case, and we have a debt service schedule that breaks that out, so I'll provide that.
Yeah, thank you.
Breakdown.
It's just a large jump, but I'm just curious.
No, no, that's a good question.
Thank you.
Council, Vice President Garza, and then our internal auditor.
Thank you, Council President. And this may not be directed to you. I do see Elizabeth O'Leary out there, but when we're talking about this budget, how many unfilled budgeted positions do we have right now? Do you know offhand?
Not offhand. I would guess around 10%, but like I said, that's an offhand guess.
And so what made me come to this question is when you mentioned inflation, those budgeted positions that's been without, that's been without being filled for, you know, let's say, two or three years, do we take into account for inflation, or has those wages stayed stagnant?
Those wages would be budgeted relative to the wages that they would come in at as filled. There's been some discussion in the Finance Office and in general about the values of budgeting for positions at 100% value versus a reduced value for vacancies. That was something that we approached a few years ago in our budget process, where we attempted to account for that by effectively freezing positions through the budget process, the ones that we didn't anticipate to fill. However, we decided against that approach due to potential union concerns, effectively eliminating or choosing individual positions. However, we may be able to amend that approach rather than including or excluding positions outright, eliminating that concern by just budgeting a portion of, say, if there's so many vacancies in the department, 50% of its value or 25% of its value, more in line with what might be realistically expected.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Emily, it's your turn.
Hello?
No, is it on? Can't? Sorry. We lose quorum.
Thanks, Councilmember Jackson. Welcome back, Jake. Well, first, you mentioned that over the last three to five years, the administration has done things to address the structural deficit. And I just, some follow-up on that because during the budget cycle, I feel like we heard time and time again that this budget was doing nothing to address the structural deficit. And then, you know, also, your net impact on fund balance, although it does decrease every year as it goes, it still does show a structural deficit and then finally ends in 2026 with a fund balance below 12%. So it's just a little different than the information we've gotten in the past from finance. So if you have more information about what's been doing, what's been done to address the structural deficit, that would be great.
No, I think those are excellent questions. And that brings together the distinction between budgetary changes versus operational changes. And so I wasn't here for the budgetary process precisely, but I can say that behind the scenes, there's been the negotiation of union contracts where the administration's been collaborating with unions. There's a number of healthcare changes and changes in funding philosophies, a discussion of whether we pay for the actually determined contribution cost of healthcare versus pay-as-you-go, balancing the immediate fiscal cost against long-term savings, and overall, taking advantage of various opportunities and resources available to us at a given time that may not be immediately present at the adoption of a budget. And so one thing that will be helpful over this current year is we plan to meet more frequently is we can adapt to our initiatives in real time and show that impact in our budget as opposed to just simply in our actions.
Okay. And then for the record, have you taken over budget?
I would say that I am taking the lead on budget. So there is still a budget analyst in the Finance Department. As it relates to my own personal qualifications, I've, as Deputy Finance Director at the City of Lansing previously, I was in the lead of budget. I have about four fiscal years involvement at the City of Lansing. I have another two fiscal years of Wayne County's budget and a few school districts in which I have provided financial assistance.
Sure. I have no doubt that you're supremely qualified to do budget. I just question whether it is under finance still or not.
Yeah, so we're working in collaboration, and so I would say I'm taking the lead.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other questions for Jake on the three-year projection? Seeing no other questions on that, so then we will move on to the budget adjustment. And let's move forward with that, Jake.
Excellent. So in front of you, you also have the proposed budget adjustment for the fiscal 2023, 2024 year. Overall, as we go through the various whereas clauses describing what we're encountering here, we are recognizing that our projected income tax revenues for last year are appearing to come in higher than projected. Those are still unaudited numbers, so I don't have them quite available at this time. But I did provide your internal auditor with a approximate projection of what we might see based on what has been posted to the ledger to date. We are also recognizing additional state revenues, factoring in the Senate Fiscal Agency estimate on revenue sharing, as well as personal property tax reimbursements that have come in higher than budgeted in previous years. We are then using these additional revenues that are projected as opposed to, there's been some discussion in previous times of using prior year reserves to backfill operating budgets. At this time, we are using these additional revenues to balance that as part of our budget proposal. And so you'll see that we've restored a number of departments, city council, courts, the mayor's office, city clerk's office, treasury income tax, human resources, parks and recreation. We've also set aside $100,000 for public service responding to the East Side storm in July 2023, not to be confused with the most recent storm damages. And then we have $500,000 set aside for human services and racial equity. That is for hoteling costs primarily as a result of increased enforcement of city ordinances.
Emily, did you want to address any of that base from your memo?
Sure. As Jake said, he did provide me with unaudited income tax data, so that was really helpful. But just for the record, were any cuts taken to any of the departments from the original proposed budget as discussed during the budget cycle?
No cuts were made. This is establishing a baseline of what the mayor's proposed budget was, with the exclusion of, you could say that the personnel cuts that were made to the mayor's office were retained. We did not add those funds back in.
Sure. Sorry to clarify, I just mean operational cuts.
Yeah, so if we're on the operational side, this is restoring the mayor's proposed budget.
And then, does this budget adjustment take the minimum 1.25% requirement for basic human services and then one, or .1 minimum requirement for addressing racial justice and equity into account?
The $500,000 for hoteling is going into the basic human needs from HRCS. When we take a look at our projected revenues, 156 million, I did a quick estimate when I saw this in your analysis, that would require about 2.1 million in the human services allocation as a whole, the 1.35%. We have met that obligation, and our budget being 2.5 million with new monies, as far as the racial justice and equity portion, the .1%, we, that requires us to maintain Right now, we are at 1,5439, and so that would require us to obligate an additional $2,186 by my estimate, which I believe we can reallocate from the MISC discretionary funds unless I'm mistaken.
Great, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Thank you.
So do we have any questions on this? If council remembers, when we passed the budget, what we were going to do was, at the first quarter, look at using vacancy factor to backfill in the operating expenses for the departments that were cut. What we have found with the information from Mr. Brewer and from our internal auditor is we received additional income tax money and state revenue. So we would be using this, these dollars, instead of the vacancy factor, to backfill all of the departments that took an operational cut. So that's restoring those. It will not, and let me say this again, will not restore the personnel line item which this council cut in the mayor's budget. This only reestablishes the operating expenditures. So are there any questions on this? Yes, councilmember calls.
Thank you, President Wood. The $500,000 for the hoteling expenses that were incurred during the red tag crisis, didn't we get a very large payout from CINTAB a month and a half ago to cover those costs?
I'll take a look at that and get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know whether we've actually received the dollars or not. I do know that councilmember Brown had brought up this issue. I did reach out to HRCS, and they are out of dollars at this time for, that happened September 1st for hoteling. So this would allow them to continue to have those dollars to be able to house people that are currently in that situation. All right, are there any other questions? Seeing none, Vice President Garza.
Thank you. With that, I'd move the budget amendment.
And with that, I would move to divide the question. I pass the gavel. Yep.
Okay, so this would be a vote to recuse Councilwoman Wood from the HRCS portion of the budget?
We got to get that, and then we'll be okay. Did she leave? Quite immediately. Do, do we have to have five or six?
Yeah, so to recuse them, it would be the majority of those present.
Right.
So that view, it would need six votes either way.
Okay. Okay, so where we are at this, you need, I asked the vice president to recall his motion.
All right, I'll recall the motion.
Okay, with that, we will move this to the 18th then, so that we can take it up on the 18th. Okay, thank you very much. That takes us to the hearing determination on the license revocation of Energy Event Center. And if we could have Ms. O'Leary come forward at this time. Ms. O'Leary, thank you for being here. I would like to explain to council how this matter is going to be handled. Ms. O'Leary is the hearing officer that was asked to conduct a hearing through the resolution that this council adopted. We received a recommendation from the Lansing Police Department that was forwarded on from the mayor's office to look at the revocation of the cabaret license for Energy Event Centers located at 3222 South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, Suite 41A. This is not for council to hold another hearing. This is to question Ms. O'Leary on her findings with the recommendations that came to council. In your packet, you have, in your packet, you have the recommendation, and you have the recommendation, and then you have the court reporter's findings. So what we're going to do is have Ms. O'Leary go through and give us her justification for the determination that she came up with, and then we will open it up for council for questions, and then we'll move from that process. This is a five-vote item. Questions that came forward from the public about other locations and other instances. This, again, was a recommendation that comes to us from the police department, or if this would have come to us from the attorney's office, or this would have come to us through the clerk's office, we would have done the same procedure. But again, some of these other locations that were mentioned are not licensed under the City of Lansing, and so we have no jurisdiction over being able to pull a particular license. So with that, Ms. O'Leary, I'll open the floor to you.
Good evening. Hearing?
Yes.
Okay. So I was appointed by this council to be the hearing officer.
I, is the green, is the green light on?
It's on now.
Okay.
Good evening. I was appointed by this council to be the hearing officer in the matter of Energy Event Center. I held a hearing on August 24th, 2023. Evidence and testimony was taken by, with a court reporter present. My recommendation was forwarded along with the transcripts and the exhibits to the council president on 9/7/2023. It's my understanding that this council has my recommendation along with the analysis, the exhibits, and also the transcript. Is there, if there's any specific questions, I think everybody has probably had opportunity to review.
What I'd like you to do is if you could go through your analysis for the public that might not have a copy of this, as well as for councilmembers that might not have looked at this beforehand. So if you could...
Okay.
You don't need to read line by line, but if you could just go through highlighting why you made the decisions that you did. Thank you.
Okay, I'll start with my analysis and my recommendation. The findings and facts were presented prior to that in 13 counts. The Lansing Code of Ordinance language regarding the cabaret license is clear when it states that a license holder is required to maintain the peace on the property during an event. The ordinance also speaks to licensees taking responsibility for safety of patrons and the public in preventing violence. The acts of violence that occurred in the parking lot, according to the testimony of both parties, were somewhere between 250 feet and 464 feet of the entrance of the event. In this situation, the parking lot is well within the definition of the premises found in the ordinance language. The requirement of maintaining the peace to ensure the safety of patrons and residents was not adhered to by Energy Event Center during the event on July 30th, 2023. During the hearing, there was also testimony along with exhibits that showed alcohol use in the parking lot of Energy Event Center. A bottle was on one of the light posts, and there was also a body cam picture of an individual holding a liquor bottle. Testimony indicated that individuals in the parking lot were exhibiting signs of intoxication. While I cannot opine with certainty on the contents of the numerous red solo cups pictured in body cam photos, given the testimony presented, it would be likely the alcohol use was present. Open alcohol in a public space is a violation of Lansing Code of Ordinances. The requirement that a cabaret licensee has to abide by all state, local, and federal laws was not adhered to when alcohol was allowed on the premises. The Lansing Code of Ordinance also requires a show license for any circus or other exhibition, entertainment, carnival show, or of any nature for which money or other consideration is in any way demanded or received for admission thereto. The concert that took place on July 29th, in July 30th of 2023 falls within the scope of this ordinance, as the event provided live artists with general and VIP admissions and entrance fees. Testimony in the hearing conveyed that Energy Events Center did not possess a show license. The requirement that a cabaret licensee has to abide by all state, local, and federal laws was not adhered to when the show license was not obtained. Multiple people were tragically injured during the early mornings of July 30th, 2023, and in light of the ordinance language, testimony, and evidence submitted during the hearing, I recommend that the city council revoke the cabaret license held by Energy Event Center.
Okay, thank you, Elizabeth. This is an opportunity for councilmember questions. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. In your consideration, isn't it true that maintaining the peace has to do with what preventative measures were taken by the holder?
I'd refer you back to my report and also the exhibits and the transcripts.
So how many security guards are necessary for a venue in that size to be attempting to keep peace?
Mr. Jackson, this is a recommendation based upon the exhibits and the transcript. It's your decision whether you want to vote to revoke.
I understand, and I guess I was just, I thought that we were supposed to ask you questions about your analysis, because that's what I was, that's just what I was doing. I mean, it's no offense. I know I've said in the past, no offense, I've said in the past that I didn't think that anybody as a city employee, unless it's maybe a city council person and maybe the clerk, I mean, it's, the hearing officer, it's just hard, because it was the mayor who recommended the action to combat gun violence. And your finding says that they are responsible for so many feet beyond the, their property where the event was being held, so many feet. And I do hear all the great points made about, you know, you know, there was a murder, Miranda Burton's here where her two sons were murdered in that Pleasant Grove, and more people in the parking lot wherever. I mean, it's like you, you can't be that responsible for that huge parking lot. 400 feet is over a football field, because 100 yards divided by three, times three, whatever feet, 300 feet is a football field. So 400 is beyond that. And the findings are saying because there were bottles and other people, they didn't sell liquor in there, so it wasn't that. My understanding there were no bottles besides those solo cups of juice. So I was just wondering, like, did you take into account how many security guards that they had present when you made your analysis?
I took into account the ordinance language, which I do not draft, the evidence that was presented in the hearing. And again, it's your recommend, it's your decision based upon my recommendation. I put all of the elements that I thought were necessary in my analysis. And all the exhibits were provided to you along with the transcript and my recommendation.
Thank you. I guess I'll just take a seat for now.
Pardon, I didn't hear your last comment.
I guess I'll, I don't know if anybody else has any comments, but, you know, I guess she's right. My vote is, the end is my vote. So I was just wondering before I voted if, like, my concerns, if they, if you had, what your answer was. And I just, because I, wasn't there like eight security guards or something? I mean, how many, four, five, six? I'm not sure. I, I didn't, I missed it in part, but I saw it in there. I just don't remember exactly.
I'm not here to opine on anything that's outside of the scope of my recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Wood. In this findings and facts recommendation that we have, there are several things highlighted in, I would say, pink maroon.
Exhibit two?
I just was wondering, are, is like written on the document? Who, was this you?
I think, yeah, that was, those were mine during the hearing.
Okay.
And that was forwarded to the court reporter, and that was part of, made part of the record.
Okay.
No significance in the highlights.
Okay, that's what I was, thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I guess when we talk about nuisance, because I think this was kind of like a conversation about whether that places a nuisance or not, I just kind of think about like something that lasts over time a little bit. And it sounds like there, this was one major incident for when Energy Center was opened. And it sounds like there were other incidents in Logan Huge Square before, but I guess I was wondering, does your, does it account for the one incident and whether there was any like, okay, here's what we're going to do. We're going to, next time, we're going to park a trooper in there or have a squad car drive by instead of this. So I guess my question is, is that, is this, is your finding based on this one incident that happened?
My finding is based on the testimony, the exhibits that were provided in the hearing on August 24th.
I know it didn't answer your question, but you, do you have another question?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Spatafor.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Maybe this isn't for you, but to law or the president. What is the timeline the council has to make this decision?
I don't believe that there is a timeline on this. We have it on the agenda because we were to receive it after the findings were done by the hearing officer. Was there some...
No, I was just curious, there, a quarter of the council isn't here this evening, and I wonder if they might have questions as well, if it might be appropriate to delay this until the committee the whole next week.
So you're asking that this be held over to the next, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I think, with all due respect, I've had a chance to look at some of the material, but not the entirety of the material, and would appreciate the extra time if we're going to be making this decision.
All right.
If there's no legal timeline that we have to satisfy.
There, there is no. So we have our next, council meeting is next week, so we can have it next week. So we have, our next council meeting is next week, so we can have it next week. Ms. O'Leary, is there the possibility that you could be back here next week if we have you first on the agenda?
I will check my schedule and advise, so.
We would appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay. So with that, we are going to table this until next council meeting. I do want to go back to the budget amendment that we had before us. What we could do is separate out the HRCS budget and hold that to the 18th, and then move the rest of the budget amendment. So what I would be looking at is a motion from the Vice President to move out the HRC budget until the 18th. Vice President Garza.
All right, thank you, Council President. With that, I would divide the question and move the HRCS portion of the budget to next Monday, September 18th.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously. Next, what we would need is a motion on the remainder of the budget items that, budget amendment items that are on to be passed this evening. Vice President Garza.
I make a motion to pass the remaining items that are left on the budget.
We have a motion before us, and then this would be on the agenda for this evening. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously. This takes us to the next item on our agenda. We realize it's 7 o'clock, and I'm sure this will go relatively fast, and that's Item G. Item H, I, J, and K that have to do with HRCS will be on a future budget, they won't, or budget, on a future Cow agenda. They will, we will not be discussing them this evening. So with that, we have authorization for early voting in non-statewide elections. We have the city clerk with us, Mr. Swope, if you would please come forward.
Thank you, Madam President. Wow, that's a strong mic. This resolution would authorize us to have early voting in this November election, as well as other non-statewide and federal elections. The constitutional amendment that was passed last November requires early voting in statewide and/or federal elections, but authorizes the municipality to do that in other elections. And I believe that this would benefit the voters of the City of Lansing. And I do have also before you an amendment that would specify the location for this November as the election unit, 2500 South Washington.
Yes, and that's Draft 2 that we have in front of us. Are there any questions for the, seeing none, Vice President Garza.
All right, thank you, Council President. With that, I'd move the resolution for consideration on the council agenda tonight to authorize early voting in non-statewide elections.
We have a motion before us. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously. And the budget priorities also will be on the next Cow agenda, because we will be passing that on the 18th. So we will have that discussion at that committee of a whole meeting as well. I'd like councilmembers to look at their schedules, see if we can start at 5 on that night. So if people would look at their schedules and see if that's available and let Sherry know, I would appreciate it. With that, we will adjourn for five minutes and then come back and start our council meeting.